Okay, actually, that probably works a little better, doesn't it? We have with us tonight, Ben Jones, who is the Assistant Public Works Director. And he has brought with him a presentation and some little bit of information about the water turbidity notification that went out this week. So with that, I'm gonna turn you over to Ben.
So I'm the water and wastewater operator here for Carlton. And I was gonna talk about the excessive turbidity notice that we had to send out in this month's billing cycle. So turbidity is the measurement of particles in water. And the state requires us to continuously monitor that every day throughout the year. And as you can see in the handout that I pass around, they require us to record it at six different times throughout each day during the year. And for the month of September, we exceeded the ninety-five percent reading that the state allows. So the state, the state wants less than a point three reading. If it's higher than that, then it's considered a high reading. And you're only allowed five percent high readings throughout the month. For the month of September, we were two readings too high, which was about one point five percent too high. So we're at ninety-three point five percent. The cause of this was from manganese in our water, in our sourced water up at the reservoir. And manganese is something that we deal with for about two to two and a half months every year in late summer to early fall. And so this year, the OHA required each city in Oregon to report on lead and copper. And because of that, they actually missed our high turbidity readings for the month of September, because that was due in October. So we didn't get this notification until January. So that's why it's so delayed. And it's standard practice to wait for OHA before moving forward. You don't wanna jump in front of them because they could require more or less of you depending on the situation. We learned some things in the process. One of the things being, right now, it's standard practice for us to clean the turbidometers once every two weeks. But during this time of the high manganese, we need to be cleaning it more frequently. It's gonna be more like every day that we have to clean it during that time. And because like this year, after we would get a high reading and we would go up to the plant, after we would clean the turbidometer, the levels would drop significantly. So the manganese was collecting in the turbidometer, and then that's why we were getting a high reading. So some things that I'd also like to point out are this violation that we got for the excessive turbidity is a tier three violation. The most severe violation being a tier one. So this is the least severe that you can get as far as violations go. And some things that we did to to help with this issue during September when we were dealing with the manganese is we increased the chlorine at the plant. Because with high turbidity, bacteria can hide in the turbidity. But by increasing the chlorine, that helps with disinfection. So it makes your water safer to drink essentially. And I would also like to point out that as a city, we're required to test for total coliform bacteria twice monthly. And those tests for the month, for the month of September, they came out good, negative, which is good. So that's, that's pretty much all I have regarding that. Do you want me to turn this off?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So with all that being said, I mean, you've worked for the city how long?
So, yeah, years now.
And it has just, this is, I mean, it sounds like this is a very uncommon issue.
Yeah. Magnesium does, it presents itself every year during the summer and early, late summer and early fall. But it's for like a two-month period. First year I was scared, water, and I wasn't running. And two years ago, my first year dealing with it, and then just with my second year. But it's still a little bit annoying, but we did learn some things in the process there.
So apparently, the magnesium has a tendency, whatever this machine is you use to test, it's got a tendency to cling on to the metal parts. So what do you clean that, what do you clean the machine with?
All that we do, turbidometer, is we take a sponge, and rinse out the basin. And we flush all the liquid out of the turbidometer. And then after that, the readings come down. Give it a pressure.
And what are you flushing it out with? Our city water, or is you using like distilled water?
You use the distilled water, and there's actually a button on the turbidometer that says flush. And then that's it. So it gets all the water that's in there out of there, and it's distilled water. And then give it a clean.
Oh, okay. Cool. Okay. I just cared how it worked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. In that case, you're, you're us.
Do you guys have my, my presentation, the slides? Can you see them? Okay. Oh, I can't see. Great.
I'm just gonna real quick do this here for the folks in the back.
Yes.
This is Jeff Sinclair of Brown and Brown, who is our
Insurance agent.
Insurance agent. So he's coming in to have a little chat with us today about board responsibility and training.
So my name's Jeff Sinclair, and I am here as your agent of record. However, my history and my experience is I was a claims and litigation person for public agencies. Well, since nineteen ninety-six. Handling claims litigation for just public agencies, cities, counties, special districts, schools, universities, what have you, just here in the state of Oregon mostly. In about seven years, I became an agent. And as that, as that happens, I've had a bunch of experiences where boards have, have gotten into some troubles unknowingly. And I wanted to create a speech to give you guys some ideas of where the lines are, where the rules might be, and just really answer any questions you may have, so that you're not surprised. That is the whole reason to be here is you have certain rights and responsibilities, and you need to exercise those whenever you'd like. But there are certain legal requirements, insurance requirements, and other things that'll help give you guys some guidance. Because the worst thing that I've had to deal with is when board members feel they're doing something right, and they're feeling like they have the reason to do it, and they find out that they're actually on their own. So today's speech is about that. I've been, I've been begging and pleading Shannon to let me do this for a while. So thank you very much. And this is, once again, this is very interactive. I really want you to ask questions, clarifying things. It was like, well, what do you mean by that, Jeff? Is this, do you mean X? Please, that's how this is valuable. I can drone a lot, and I don't wanna do it unless you want me to keep going. So here we go. Okay, so once again, I'm Jeff from Brown and Brown. Your insurance provider is City County Insurance Services. It's a risk pool. It is not an insurance company. It's like cities and counties throughout the state get together and create what's called an IGA, intergovernmental agreement, and you decide to help cover each other through this risk sharing program. So they offer you coverage, very, very good coverage actually, that's, that's basically focused towards cities and counties through the states. There are other options for insurance and other avenues. They are gonna be way more expensive for way less coverage. This is focused in Oregon, nonprofit, you're in the right spot. Very good coverage in that sense. What I don't have up here is safe. Safe is your workers' compensation provider. And so they're the ones that help your, your employees get back on their feet monetarily and otherwise when they might get hurt doing what Ben was doing, which is, which is a very important job. Any questions about that? All right, next slide, please. So the Oregon revised statutes are kind of the Bible of what it means to be a public entity. And in your case, a councilperson, board member, employer, volunteer. Or as thirty dot two six zero, it's called the Oregon Tort Claims Act. If you've not read the Oregon Tort Claims Act as a city councilperson, I'd really recommend you do that. It talks about the responsibilities of who is under the umbrella of other tort claims act limitations. It could be days to file claims, other, other things that are there. If you can, I know it's not great reading, it's not very, you know, exciting. But truly speaking, this is kind of the Bible of the, of the way that people can file claims against public entities, but also the protections that you have as, as a public person on a board, but also employees, volunteers, and otherwise. So it's very, very important that you understand what those are, because it affects you, it affects you personally if things go sideways. And I don't want to have that, as I mentioned. So who is covered? What I mentioned, the city councilors, employees, volunteers. However, it's while in the course and scope of your duties, under the direction and control of the city. Okay, course and scope, direction and control. You're gonna hear that from me a few times today, because that's a really important part of this conversation. That's when the umbrella comes out. What are the limits of damages? When the city has a tort, this is a negligence type claim, duty owed, a breach of duty, and damages. I have a sidewalk that is crumbled. A person walks on that sidewalk, they trip and fall, and they injure their leg. You had a duty to have a sidewalk in good repair. You didn't, and they were injured. All three of those things have to happen for a tort to be in action. If I almost tripped, or I wasn't injured, but I did trip, and I just feel embarrassed, let's say, that's not a tort, because I wasn't damaged, or the duty wasn't breached. So duty owed, breach of duty, and damages are the three main portions. And then the nexus between the three things together, that's what creates a tort. This isn't a chocolate tort, this is T-O-R-T. So, okay. Limits of damages are important, because as a public agency in Oregon, we have tort protections. That's a very big deal. Many states, California and Washington, do not. So there are limitations. If you're gonna file a claim against the city, against a water district, against a fire department, what have you, there's limitations. The per occurrence limit right now is just a little bit above one point seven million dollars. That's the most that they're gonna be able to get from you on a per occurrence basis, like one point seven one million dollars per occurrence. So that's a bunch of people in one event have to share one point seven million dollars. But eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars for one person to get that. Now, take that same type of a lawsuit or same type of a claim and go up to Washington or down to California, it could be two million, three million, five million dollars. It just depends. So those venues matter. Being in Oregon are massive protections that we have against some of these nuclear verdicts for state claims, state torts, those things I mentioned, okay? This does not apply to federal claims. So discrimination, retaliation, can be abuse sometimes, hostile work environment sometimes. Those are federal claims, and those are Katie bar the door, they get their, their attorney's fees, and people like Tyler get really rich, and he does it because he's defense. But the plaintiff attorneys get really rich, multiple houses and such. So that's, that's a really important part of this, of this framework about this, this Oregon Tort Claims Act is there. And it dictates as a public employee, as a, as a board person, what have you, that you are protected under these certain circumstances. I mention this because city, county provides you insurance, as I mentioned before. City, county may have limitations, they may have things that are, that are not covered for whatever reason, they may supplement them, have different limits or what have you. What matters is that you have coverage under the certain umbrella for the insurance, of course, we'll talk about that. But also, you have this tort protection as well, which is based in statute. Those can be different, because the insurance may exclude something that the, that the Tort Claims Act requires. Just something to think about when that happens. Next slide, please. Thank you. My goal here is to make sure that you get under the umbrella, that you know when you're doing things, when you're saying things, when you're writing things, when you're keyboarding things late at night, that you know when your role is as a city councilperson, or when you are just Jeff Sinclair, you know, man, man about town. Okay? Because it's really a lot less that you're under the umbrella than you might think. There's politically, you're always on, right? You go to the store, you go to the car wash, you go wherever, and you're always the board, you're the city council chair, right? But no, 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 that's not legally. Right? So that's the political side of it. You're always on politically, but you're not always protected and on legally. Talk more about that. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the coverage, the coverage in this case is member. So the member means this, that, that it is going to be, first of all, the, the named member is the city with city, counties, insurance, and then you'll be a member to have the coverage. And that is officers, employees, agents, volunteers, not me agents, but people that you may hire otherwise. But all acting within the course and scope of their employment duties, okay, arising out of the government function. So what are you supposed to be doing for the city? What have you been told to do? What's Ben's job versus what Ben does? Is Ben's job to go to seaside with his friends and go fishing? It's not his job. If he's doing that, he leaves the umbrella, right? However, if Shannon says, yes, go fishing with your friends on city business, I wanna work here. But that's not, that's not really the way to go. So does that make sense? So getting, getting yourself under the umbrella, but course and scope, direction and control matters for everybody at this table except for Tyler, but you know, who's an employee, board member, a city councilperson, what have you. Any questions about that? Okay, next slide, please. So I have this happen a lot, and this is where the conversations take place. When I say political versus legal reality, you know, the idea that you're on this in the city council and you're approached, or you're asked questions, or you get complaints. Someone's house gets flooded. Someone's, you know, basement gets, you know, could be sewer issue, whatever it might be, anything that you may or not be involved in as a city councilperson. They might think you're in charge of something and you're not. But they come to you, and they say, hey, I believe that this is wrong, and I want you to do something about it. And you start talking, oh my goodness, I wanna help you. Absolutely. You should sue the city. You should sue the city. Get yourself some money. Let's not do that. Let's not even help that. But, but in the end, your role as a board member truly is to, or as a councilperson, is to ask them, I'd love to help you with this. Can I get your information? Okay, Jeff Sinclair, your address, your phone number, email address. Great. I'm gonna pass this off to the city manager, and she or her staff's gonna call you right away. Thank you very much. And then you back off into the ether. Okay? You can follow up questions if you would like with Shannon and her team, that's fine. But in the end, where I see board members getting in trouble with, by leaving the umbrella, is when they get more involved in things that's not within your, your realm of, of a city councilperson. And you can do that. You totally can do that, and it's okay. Just realize that the umbrella of the coverage, what's the course and scope of your duties as a city councilperson versus what's not? You're only a city councilperson in these meetings for these two or three hours, hopefully it's two hours. But you know, it's for two or three hours. Or you're a city councilperson for a committee that you're assigned to by the city council, right? They say, okay, four of us are gonna be on, on the committee for the, for the executive issues. Great. You've now created where the, where the city council said, we are gonna appoint you there, and you there, and you there. You know, you're gonna talk at the, at the events X, Y, and Z, and say this on our behalf. And then Kevin, you're gonna talk about this, you're gonna write this about this. Those are where the, where the council, the board, whatever you wanna call it, is going to be giving direction to you individually. Putting, once again, course and scope is gonna extend to that event. Where we have people get in trouble is writing letters to the editor, going on Facebook, to other things, and writing wrongs. You guys know a lot about the details of this. You guys know a lot about the truth, and you can help clarify things. You can, because you know more. You're involved, you're giving your time and treasure to the city. However, if something happens as a result of that, when you're at night, you know, emailing things or whatever, saying things, talking to people, chances are, that's not the course and scope of your duties as this body. And you're acting on your own personally. So if a lawsuit's brought for libel, for slander, for whatever it might be, defamation, the, the coverage and the Tort Claims Act may not follow you, and you might be on your own. It's okay that you do it. Just realize that that's my worry for you, is unknowingly stepping across that way, thinking you're protected, and you may not be, putting yourself and your family in financial risk. I give you a lot there. Yeah.
As volunteers and as a board of the city, this applies to planning commissioners as well, correct?
If, if they are part of the, the commission that the, that the city council has granted them the authority to make that, yes, absolutely. Yeah, every, every employer volunteer is the same way. No one's different. It's whatever your role is. That's your role, and you've got full protection of this. It's ten million dollars of coverage, it's super broad. It's got a lot of things to help you. However, if you do X, Y, and Z that are not within the core scope of your duties, you're outside, then that's a challenge. And, and so that, that's something to pay real, real attention to. Yes?
So then, say like on our yearly cleanup down the park, people volunteer for that five or six hours there under this umbrella.
Yeah, so, so that's a great point. So if, if like you're, you're doing a, a citywide, a city sponsored thing, and the city's taking ownership of it. We talk about, you know, risk, risk transfer, where I'm taking risk, I'm having it on somebody else, someone else is gonna do it for us, transfer that risk, we're gonna take it on. We call it embrace it or divorce it. We talk about this a lot. You know, either embrace the risk, take the whole thing on, control it, manage it, something bad happens under the umbrella. However, if you, if you push it off onto a vendor or another group to do X, Y, and Z, then that's where you're saying, no, no, you will pay for that, you'll have insurance, and you'll defend and indemnify the city if that thing's happened. But people who are volunteering for you can, can very well be within this. In fact, I hope they are. The key to volunteers, volunteers are not free, right? Because you really should have a, a volunteer program or protocol where you're going, okay, your job as a volunteer today is you're gonna do this, this, and this. We're gonna go pull blackberry bushes, and we're gonna pull English ivy, which ivy has pulled my life because of this, but English ivy or whatever it might be, right, to clear this out of certain areas. Great. If I go off and I do that next two weeks by myself, or if I start painting benches, or I start doing, that's, I'm being kind, I'm being neighborly, but that's not my role as a volunteer, as an employer, as a board member, as a councilperson. So that, that's really important that you guys understand that, because it's, it's where, like I said, you're giving so much of your time and treasure. You're here, you've spent a lot of your own money likely, you spent a ton of your own time to be here, because you want to be for the public good. You were trying to do better for the community. And so that's why the mistakes of, well, I should be covered, and then you may not be. That's my concern. That's what makes you understand the right line. So let's go to the next slide. We'll talk about a few examples. Watch, one more thing. So board members are only empowered during sanctioned board meetings where a quorum is present, or where the board is designated, special duties, such as committee appointments, attending conference, report back, what have you. This is a great example that I've actually had before, and it affected both the city and the special district ironically at a different time, same exact thing. Let's say that two of you guys are gonna go to the city, county conference next month, right? The insurance conference is there. I hope you guys can attend. If you're not going, it's great. Please do. Let's say that two of you guys raise your hand, say, we can attend. And, and then others, you say, I can't, I have other things to do, or just can't make it work. And then all of a sudden, you decide, you know what? I'm just gonna show up. I, it does work out at the very end. You just show up. Technically speaking, the city council gave two of you the ability to go. You're the representatives from the city. If two or three more of you guys go, that's, that could be on your own. So being intentional, talking to your, to your staff, say, hell, Jeff can go. Great. Oh, well, we got to see you guys there. Great, well, I'll be there. That's fine to do that, but be intentional about, I'm gonna go. The reason I bring this up is we have some board members, some city council members, and school board members who will go to a random conference, a random event out of state, sometimes out of country, thinking that they're covered by the school board, the city council, the county commissioners, when they're not. The county, the county council didn't say to do that, the city didn't say to do that, you're doing that on your own. We will dictate who's gonna be talking for us, doing things for us. Okay? So be intentional about that. Don't withhold it, but just be intentional about, great, we're gonna do X and do Y, that makes a lot of sense. Question, Linda?
Yeah, so just to clarify, if you are gonna do anything like that, make sure that you have notified the city manager and that everything is straight and in writing with the city before you wander off.
I love that. I like, leave breadcrumbs for the attorneys and the adjusters, is what I say. Leave breadcrumbs. And so if you've never talked about a situation, I'll see you say, I'm going to Alaska. That's a problem. But if it's a known conference on your calendar of possible events, possible trainings, possible things you can do, that's much easier. It's like, oh, we all were invited, I just couldn't go, now I can. That's an email back and forth, talks about it, let everybody know Jeff will actually be there. But be intentional about it, because you don't wanna have to defend yourself, you know, months down the road for something that, that seemed innocuous. But now it's really important, because you may not be under the umbrella of the coverage or the Tort Claims Act. That's a really good question. Let's go to the next slide. We'll get through a couple of these examples. So chain of command approached Fred Myers, I mentioned this a few times already, but someone approaches you and Fred Myers at the deli counter. This has happened so many times at this deli counter, I don't know what's going on at the deli counters with Fred Myers. But people wanna complain to you at the deli counters and really, really charge you up and, and demand that you make something work, make something change, or something happens. Once again, take their information, thank them for their input, of course, and then pass it on to your one employee, the city manager, and let her take care of that, and then report back to you if you'd like. Do not make any commitments, do not make any, any statements that say, well, we'll take care of it, sorry, it's our fault. It's good to have empathy and say, I'm sorry this happened to you, this sounds terrible. That's okay. I'm sorry we did this to you. I'm sorry that, you know, that we caused this. I'm sorry that we, you, you don't really know what the background is. You know, Ben's job is much more complex than we understand, and there might be laws surrounding his job that he does, that we don't know. So if you just hear one person's side of the story, and then you give them the, the ability to say, well, well, the councilperson said that they're gonna cover this. That's why I went out and got SerPro to come out and spend ten thousand dollars to help my house. You owe me ten thousand dollars. That's called detrimental reliance. If they relied on your advice, saying that you're gonna pay for it, and they wouldn't have spent it otherwise, it can lead to liabilities. Am I right? Thank you. I'm not a lawyer, so that's why. But, but that's where you're having that, that idea, but, but you're helpful. Of course you're helpful. That's why you're here. You wanna help guide and, and help guide the, the city. But don't, don't give the minutia of that. Come in and come out. Help. Next one, please. So this is the response on Facebook, unfriendly criticism, TikTok, all these things. It's really easy to do this. Please, just realize that unless you are given permission to be the city public communicator on, you know, TikTok, that that's not your job as a city councilperson. The umbrella will not follow you. So if you're sued for slander or libel on this scale, for, for, for doing this online, you defamed me, you could be in real trouble personally, okay? That will likely not come over you. So be aware, you can do it. And by all, by all means, if you feel the need, but that's on you, that's your first amendment, right? Not protections under the Tort Claims Act. Yeah.
Just on that point, Jeff, so Jeff is talking about legal liability. Our rules of procedure do also require all of you, if you are gonna be participating in social media, that you make it clear when you are or are not speaking as a city councillor, and you're restricted about what you can talk about in your official capacity as a city council member. So that kind of links into, were you acting as a representative of the city, not just based on what you said, but what the city allows you to speak about out in the world? So keep that in mind as well.
And that, that's a good point, that you guys are privy to a lot of information that may not be public. Purchasing of items, deals being made. Purchasing of items, deals being made, liability, litigation, this pending, there's all kinds of stuff that only you know and only you can know confidentially. And it's hard to to see people who don't understand, say really nasty things about about you or others in the city. To you, you wanna defend, you know, Shannon, you wanna defend, you know, your team, it's it's very hard, you really have to hold back on that. You can ask for other things, ask legal and other people to help you with that stuff, but realize that's that's a really good point, I appreciate bringing that up, it's hard to do that. Next one. Okay, you're called at home by the Oregonian of all things, yes, they still have a paper, they still call. Um, realize that you can comment on whatever you wanna comment on within the parameters of of your rules, but if you're doing that and you're not authorized, you're doing it as John Q. Public Jeff Sinclair, okay? Once again, so unless you're you're deemed that way. Now, I sometimes the the um the the chair can be can be given that that ability to do that, if that's in your rules, to have the chair be able to to speak bluntly or or to speak um, you know, professionally and otherwise, that's fine. But just realize that that that's a, that's really need to make sure you stay in line on, that's tough. Uh, once again, they're gonna ask you good questions, you know the answer's two, but you can defer it to legal counsel or to to your employee, which is the city manager. Okay, next one. Okay, this is good, you're in an auto accident while driving your personal vehicle to a city meeting, to this meeting right now. So if you ha- happen to have, don't do it, please, knock on wood, if you happen to have an accident on your way to this meeting, are you covered by the umbrella of coverage? The an- the answer is no, because you're not here yet, okay? This is also, it's kind of kind of work question as well for city employees, you don't get, you don't have coverage until you get to your place of work, right? Until you get to your meeting, however, what if you're going to a training in Newport or Salem or Seaside? That's the next slide, if that's the case, then that's that's the idea of, well, but for your your you're doing this training, you would not be going there. So that would be covered for liability as you drive from here, Carlton, to Salem or to Newport or to Seaside where it might be, okay? And I say that because oftentimes people go, well, am I covered this, that? Well, technically speaking, if if the automobile is driving that's yours, your in- insurance is first, primary, and then the city's is secondary, okay? If you're driving a city vehicle, I don't know if you drive city vehicles at all, you do, but city vehicles are all paid for, that that's first by them. You don't allow that, right? Okay, good, it's just better for everybody. Um, but realize tha- that's that's different, so so having said that, that's the thing where automobile stuff is can be very complicated sometimes. You're, the owner of the vehicle is gonna be primary on on those things, and then the city will back you up secondary cuz that's that's your role, okay? Any questions about that? Good, okay. You can go to the next, click this one more. Okay, so the coverage, just a little bit of nerding out here, I'll get just down the weeds here a little bit. We've had a number of issues with with city council people who are given O G E C complaints. If you don't know what O G E C is, I congratulate you, I guess if you do, they might have gotten you for it. You are in governmental ethics commission, there are people that are gonna come after you personally for errors that you may make as a city council person. Let's say you don't go into executive session properly, you have a conflict of interest, there's all kinds of things that you may or may not do that are improper on a personal level, and so they'll file a governmental ethics complaint against you individually. Now, there is some coverage for the defense of this by your insurance company, so you're like, wow, if I'm if I'm um you have an action against me for O G E C, they're saying I did something wrong as a as a board member, um, I can get coverage for that, possibly, yes, it's possible. But it's got a lot of caveats, it's seven thousand five hundred dollars per council person, okay? Total of fifteen thousand per city or per member in this case. That's only like two bites of the apple, right? So all of you guys getting the same, get the same action against you, you're sharing the fifteen grand, right? Which is not a lot cuz these guys are really expensive sometimes, not you, not you, Trevor, I'm just kidding. Okay, so having said that, however, this this is not to bail you out of 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 things that you may have actually done wrong. This is if you prevail. So when this was first unearthed as coverage, uh, nineteen eighty-five is when this is when city county first started, okay? Every pool started nineteen eighty-five. Um, they were seen where people were being politically attacked by using ethics complaints. If they didn't like the fact you were putting a road down down Main Street or you're on to the left on second or third, whatever it was, they could then say, you've done this wrong, we're gonna get you, and they would try and try and run you out financially because of 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 these kind of actions and really to make, how do you defend yourself and go, you know what, I'm out, I can't take it, this isn't worth it. So this is to protect those people that are being harmed, being attacked by those with no basis. That's what that money is for, seven thousand five hundred dollars is to do. So if you have a claim against you for for O G E C complaining, it's you personally, and you don't prevail, let's say it goes from a five thousand dollar fine down to five hundred bucks, they go, you know what, you're right, I see I got there, but you still did screw a little bit grant, so it's gonna be four hundred dollars or two hundred dollars or fifty bucks even. That fifty bucks means you did not prevail, you're not gonna get reimbursed for that seven thousand five hundred dollars, okay? That's that's really troublesome, we I've had a number of customers and back in the day when I when I was dealing with claims where they had five people that were all being attacked or have had issues, and that money went really fast amongst all five of you. Or six or seven, you know, which which entity it is, any questions about that? So the O G E C is, um, if you have any questions, you know, that's that's good to and and to have Tyler here to help you guys kind of walk through when executive session can do it or when to keep you from walking into too many different topics that you're not supposed to in executive session, that can be very helpful as well. It's hard sometimes, right?
What's the um the note about approval of attorney, I don't know if you touched on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, you have to, um, as you gets, um, thank you for that, as you gets um the O G E C complaint and you go, you know, I'm gonna hire my my friend Bill to defend me, you need to let city county know that you're gonna hire Bill, they'll say, yep, Bill's good to go, and then you guys can walk together, then that way, when you prevail, they'll know Bill's billings and they'll do that at the same time. They don't wanna have surprises, you can't just like come up six months later and go, here's seven thousand five hundred dollars with the bills. That's a bad deal, sorry, we're we're legal bills and therefore pay me, you have to walk with them as you go through the process, I appreciate that, Kevin, thank you.
I can't, I can't imagine necessarily what kind of a situation this would be, but what if I hired an attorney that you guys were not comfortable with? Does that happen?
I've not run into that before because the limit's honestly so low. If it was like a normal litigation case and you guys wanted to have, you know, it was a a big giant case and we wanna use this attorney from this law firm and city county does not approve of that cuz they're paying the entire freight, that'd be a different story. But because it's so low, I've not had them decline an attorney before uh who was gonna be defending a a a board member. Very good question, it's possible, I've never had it happen before. Yeah, good question, all right, last, also last slide. Time is volunteer direction, control course and scope, once again, be intentional. When it comes to when it comes to volunteers, they can have job descriptions too, give them some ideas of 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 really what you're having them do for you. Cuz I will tell you, I have, I've had a number of people where they were painting curbs to help out on a Saturday, they just kept painting curbs. And then somebody tripped and fell on their paint bucket and broke their leg and they sued the city, and the city's like, they were a volunteer nine months ago and they just kept painting things, and that's 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 hardcore. But that's a problem cuz we weren't controlling them, we didn't have them any safety gear and he, they're just doing it as the others are doing it, so be careful of that, be intentional about that. Not not fun sometimes, go ahead, please. Um, similar to what we talked about for you guys, you know, employee driving home from work, strike pedestrian, that's not covered because they're not working for you when they're going home. Or if they're going to a conference, then will be secondary, of course, thank you, next slide. Sorry, I keep pointing to you guys, it's like, I give it to you when I when I showed up, so, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so really, as city council, be deliberate up about who you're asking to do what for you. Um, when, what context, give them the breadcrumbs of that, so that if there's any questions, no one's gonna be going, we never met, that, we have, no, you need to know what you can and can't do and be okay with that. And if you have any questions, talk about it in the meetings, talk about it um overtly, be direct, be intentional, that's really helpful sometimes. Um, you guys are, you know, doing great, this is, you know, the building is amazing, you know, I've been here how many times and it just keeps getting better and better every time I come here. But um truly speaking, um, my worst nightmare for you is you to be surprised by things that happen that's that's not your intent. So that's why this is so important, but think twice about your actions, don't assume on that you're under the umbrella necessarily. If you have any questions, please ask staff or your attorney or Jeff at Brown and Brown. Any more questions, I think that's about it, right? Yeah, okay.
So um, you know, propose a scenario and help me through it a little bit, but um, so we sit in these city council meetings or planning commission meetings, um, whatever it is, tourism committee. Um, and as I understand, you said, you know, unless the council or staff says, hey, Kevin, I want you to go speak for city council at the planning commission meeting per se. Um, if I, they didn't give me that direction and I go to that meeting and I introduce myself as Kevin Skipper, your city council president of Carlton, Oregon, I'm kind of stepping outside of that umbrella.
If the city didn't, if the if the council did not tell you to do X and you do X, you're likely outside the umbrella.
Right.
It doesn't mean that you can't go and you can't talk, I'd rather you not say, you know, uh, you can introduce yourself and say, I'm I'm all all the things, but say, however, I'm not here in that capacity, I'm here as as Kevin Skipper.
Right.
Saying that, and that helps you, by the way, helps you clarify where you're at, therefore, it helps you think about things you're gonna say maybe, but also helps you clarify the people around you to give it that credence, I'm talking personally here. This is me discussing this very important topic to me and my family or me and my city even. But I'm not talking at the at the request of the board, I'm talking to council, I'm talking to the request of, you know, my family or myself. Yeah, be intentional with that, that's a great point, cuz it seems logical, it seems natural sometimes, I'm talking here, I'm part of this, I'll say the same stuff right here. I'll say the same stuff over there, that makes a lot of sense, and you can do that, it's just not necessarily with the umbrella of coverage over you from the city.
Yeah, I see it more so on this side of things, you know, we we get public comment or whatever and we have people announce themselves as planning commissioner or whoever, and they they speak about planning issues, and I've always felt like, you know, you're kind of stepping outside of that umbrella in a way.
Ask them, do your do yourself a favor and then a favor, say, are you here um at at the request of of the planning commission, are are you? Ask them, cuz that that matters to you, cuz is it six people behind him, him or her, or is it is it just me talking? That I would ask them or ask them to to clarify that, that's a really good point, yeah, thank you. Got more questions, who's been approached, who's, you know, at the the mini mart down here, whatever? Well, I love the city, uh, my wife and I like wine, so uh, thank you for being here. No, this is great, um, it's my pleasure, you have any questions, please don't don't be afraid to to direct them toward staff and I'll get those answered for you. Um, and if you can go to the conference, it's always a great time to see and and collaborate with people like yourselves, um, thank you very much, yeah.
We have a couple of planning commissioners here, I just wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to ask any questions if they had any. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course, all right, well, thank you very much.
No, we're done, so you can conclude the meeting and take a recess until seven o'clock.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, okay, it is seven o'clock and we are calling to order the uh regular city council meeting for the month of February. Could you call the roll call, please?
Yes, I can, councillor Terrell? Councillor Thompson-Rizer?
Present.
Councillor Erickson?
Present.
Councillor Ward-Mullen?
Present.
Councillor Skipper?
Here.
Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Councillor Hill is absent, but we have six in attendance giving us quorum. Thank you.
All righty, please join with me and say the pledge of allegiance. All righty, are there any changes or additions to the meeting um agenda?
There's one change, mayor, there, we are going to add an item F for the city manager update, thank you.
Thank you. All righty, ceremonies, awards, and appointments. Okay. Which brings us to citizen comments. Sorry, my pen's trying to run away from me. Okay, this section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state their name and street address and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. And we start with item A, which is items that are not on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody out here who wants to speak? Yes, whoop, she was first. Yes. Kathy Dorner, uh, one one two zero zero Madoffrey Road. I attended the city council goal setting meeting on January twenty-fifth. The city councillors adopted a greater transparency and communication with the public as one of their key goals this year. They welcome and want to listen to all of your questions, feedback, and concerns for our town of Carlton. Whether you are concerned about a possible gas station on Main Street, the funding of the civic center, the burden of our water sewer rates, the state of our streets and sidewalks, or the quality of communication and transparency with the public, or whatever else is important to you. This is a two-way street, they need to hear from us, the public, as much as we need to hear from them. I encourage all of you to spread the word with your neighbors so that we can fill up the seats in this space every meeting. So thank you all for coming.
Good evening, uh, John Dorner, one one two zero zero Northeast Madoffrey Road. And uh, I think that's about that. And I'd like to know if there's been any new activity on the permitting of the gas station casino laundromat down here. That's a question, and uh uh, has it, has uh the owner gotten back in touch with the city uh since initial discovery was made that this was in process? I would like to know that. And has the city gotten back in touch with him since the initial instigation of this? And I'd also like to know where is the, where is that at in process now? What's going on with his application for a permit, I think that's where it's at now. And when will this be resolved? Thank you, this is important to me.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, uh, anyone who would like to address any items that are on the agenda tonight? Not right now, all righty. And Catherine and John, we will get back to you on both of those, and I still owe you some information too, so I will get that to you. All righty, moving along, um, consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Mayor, is this an opportunity to have a discussion about something on the consent agenda?
Not really.
So I have a, I have a question regarding the um, the accounts payable that's on consent.
You probably need to take that up with Shannon at a later date.
Yeah, if you can forward that question to us, please.
We usually.
It's been moved and approved.
So, interesting, okay, I mean, it's a simple question, it's, I think you could probably just answer it.
It was moved and seconded and we've
Okay.
Moved along here. All righty, um, is there anything, okay, ordinances, resolutions? Alrighty, um, is there anything, okay, ordinances, resolutions, discussion and action items? Item A, recology update. Dan Blue.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Uh, my name is Dan Blue and I'm a government relations manager for Recology Northern Oregon. Um, this is just an informal uh, update. Mainly wanted to introduce a couple of um, my colleagues. Uh, one of them is brand new to our organization and one of them has been with us for a while. Do you all want to come up and introduce yourself really quick?
Evening, mayor, council. Uh, as Dan mentioned, I'm new to my role. I'm the new assistant general manager. My name's Nick Wohlheiser. Uh, assistant general manager for our Recology Western Oregon operations here in the valley. So overseeing collections, our transfer station as well as our compost site that we have here as well. Uh, my responsibilities also include overseeing our coast operations, um, and our store in Warrenton, and overseeing our uh, other two compost sites that we have here in the valley. Um, new to the role within the last five months, but I've been with Recology and in the industry for about sixteen years now. Um, local to the area, grew up in Dayton, uh, bought property from my parents. I've lived there pretty much ever since. I got a, a son and a wife that we live out there, so love the area and thank you, thank you for having us here tonight. So just want to introduce myself.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kate Kleinstuber. I'm the new waste zero specialist with Recology. I've been with the company for just about five months now. I was a twenty twenty COVID graduate at Yamhill Carlton, so I'm really familiar with the area. My role is community education and outreach, uh, doing waste reduction and education, uh, recycling, uh, improvements, uh, working with uh, commercial residential businesses on reducing contamination rates. And I got my degree in sustainability at Western Oregon University and I'm really happy to be with Recology.
Thank you.
So we're really excited about having Kate on board. Um, some of you might be familiar with Rhonda Green, who was our, our waste zero specialist, serving both um, Yamhill County and Polk County, but also at the coast. Uh, Rhonda lives at the coast and so she's serving just our coastal communities, which means Kate is full-time here in the valley, which just means more opportunity for services for the city of Carlton. So we're really excited about that. Um, along those same lines, a couple of kind of outreach updates. Um, for many years, we had one Facebook page that served both our valley jurisdictions and the coast. Didn't make a lot of sense when there was weather, weather at the coast, um, to post on Facebook for folks here. So we've split that apart and we encourage everybody to sign up for um, Facebook. If you use Facebook, uh, join our Recology Western Oregon Valley account. Uh, that's the best place to get really quick inclement weather notices and that sort of thing, also tips on recycling and sustainability. Uh, so the existing customers for the Facebook page went to the coast, so we're trying to build this, this one here in Yamhill County from scratch. So please consider signing up for that. For example, um, early, was it this morning that we, yeah, we didn't have collections at the coast at all today because they had snow. No snow here in the valley, so we're able to, you know, send that message to our coastal customers directly and we'll be able to do the same thing here. Um, a couple of other things, uh, we are, um, as with Kate on board, we're, we're expanding some of our outreach programs. Uh, this is not hundred percent final yet, but uh, Recology supports artist and residence programs at many of our sites, started in the San Francisco area. We have that at the coast and we also do it up in King County and in the Portland market. And what it is, is we will provide a stipend for uh, a couple of artists over a four-month period to take um, materials out of the transfer station that would otherwise go to the landfill and create art with that. It's a paid stipend. And then we'll have an art show um, sometime in the fall to show, show their work. We're really excited about that. I'm hoping for final approval here any day now. Um, but we encourage any artists in the community Carlton here or anywhere else on Yamhill County um, to apply for that. It's a thousand dollars a month over four months. Super excited about that. We're also doing a poster contest in our, our schools throughout the, our service area here in the valley, where um, classrooms can do a, a, a poster for Earth Day and they will be judged. And the winning um, classrooms, the winning posters for each uh, category. Well, the teacher will get a hundred dollars for school supplies and the kids will get, um, I think they get like a pizza party or something, right Kate? And then the one who wins out of all of our schools will get their poster on a T-shirt. We'll be giving it out for Earth Day at our transfer station. So just a few things that we're working on that are kind of service plus.
Yeah.
Otherwise, no real changes in our collection services uh, here in Carlton. We are paying attention to the Recycling Modernization Act, which starts in July. Um, I've met with your city manager recently about that and we're working on that. Um, otherwise, you know, things are just rolling along and we will be back um, in April, May, June to talk about rate review as our, what we do annually. But just wanted to thank you for giving us a few minutes to just say hi and make those introductions.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions, but I know we have short time here.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yep.
Can you just go back and repeat again about who's providing contact information to be alerted of?
Yeah, so we have a Facebook page um, dedicated just for Yamhill and Polk County and Grand Ron. And that's where people can get inclement weather alerts. We put it on our website as well. But um, if you're signed up for social media, Facebook's a good way to get notified that, hey, we might be running late with our trucks because of snow or ice. Or in some cases, if we can't pick it up at all, we work to pick it up the next day um, or the day after that. We usually try to pick up those, those services once they're missed.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes, sir.
So with that being said, if you have an incident where say they just miss your cam that day.
Yeah.
Is it still best just to call in or send message?
So, so if our driver just misses it on a normal day, absolutely give us a call. Um, Nick, we would try to come back and pick up a missed pickup. Okay, yeah, just give us a call. Um, I will also, if you allow me that extra minute, uh, historically over the last few years, our call hold times have been pretty terrible. I'll be super honest about that. Uh, we are fully staffed with ten customer service reps serving the coast and the valley. Most of them are located in McMinnville. Two of them are bilingual, Spanish, English, which is a first for us. I'm really proud of that. Um, and our hold times are down under three minutes consistently for the past, what, six weeks or so? So things are getting really better in our, in our administrative offices. Very excited to share that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Alrighty. Item B, Sasquatch Duro rape bike event application.
Hi, I'm mayor and council. We have Mike Ripley here. He's the event organizer um, of Bud Slinger Events. He wants to bring a bike event here in Carlton. It is an exciting opportunity. Um, if you have any questions, this is the guy to ask. He is an expert in what he does. He's very thorough. It is a joy to work with him, with somebody that wants to do the city proud and get everybody involved and have everybody have a good time. So with further ado.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Ripley, uh, Monroe, Oregon, two, four, eight, two, five, Elbit Lane. Uh, thank you guys for having me here today and Amy, thank you very much. We've been working on this since August of this year, which is a long time. But uh, just to give you a little background on myself, uh, grew up in Oregon. I put on fourteen events a year, uh, Pendleton, Sisters, Bend, Canyonville, Keighd Grove, uh, Walport, Yahats. I love the rural area. I'm addicted. That's from growing up in the seventies, going to find a fishing pond somewhere with my dad and uh, just having a good time unplugging. So my proposal and Amy has the permit and it's probably forwarded over to Shannon. Everybody's been a great communicator um, in the community. It has such charm that we're going to bring a cycling event April thirteenth, uh, Sunday. That's the proposal. Uh, staging from over on West Grant over there. Uh, every participant gets a fourteen dollar food voucher. That makes it really unique for what I do is that I don't tend to want to just come in and pillage a community and take over and then leave. I think economic impact and giving somebody a very good first impression is what I do across the state. Uh, my business, my family business, my kids, I have three daughters. We've been doing it for twenty-three years and prior to that and during that, I did twenty-six years of restaurants. Someone's also in the Air Force Reserve, so um, the most important thing for me, thank you for having your local insur, your um, citywide insurance guy. I live in that world. Uh, liability, first position insurance, um, proper medical, uh, proper safety support and understanding the roles and responsibilities of our eight-member staff, uh, volunteers. And in conjunction with all that, Philip Higgins, um, has reached out to me from Cycle Yamhill and we've been working together, collaborating to expose Cycle Yamhill on our website and also integrate that all of our communications when it comes to our newsletter. Um, our company has around eighty-five thousand unique people that visit um, our site in the year with the highest um, population, Seattle, Portland, Bend, uh, and we just love bringing people in to have a quality weekend experience. So uh, if the permit goes through, and I hope it does, we'll be looking to have a follow-up meeting to get police, fire, public works together, uh, look at how we can make this as um, as safe and enjoyable as possible. Uh, today I met a lot of really cool neighbors uh, over there. They all got my letter last week. I sent a letter to all the residents over by Cutch Street because we have a petition in for a temporary street closure between South Yamhill and, and Cutch just for, just for six thirty till ten in the morning. Once we leave, we open it up. Um, the riders uh, will have, I'll expect we'll have three hundred to four hundred people come into town on that Sunday. So we'll definitely be noticed. Uh, my wife's not too happy. It's Palm Sunday that uh, I'm giving up uh, my Palm Sunday service. I know it makes me pretty cafeteria, doesn't it? I'm sorry. I'll have to say some extra blessings that we could go to Wednesday and ask. But uh, anyway, I'd love to come to your community down here if you've seen the permit to answer any questions, so feel free to ask me anything.
Yeah, okay. Counselor?
So I was reading in the paperwork we got.
Mm-hmm.
Something about riders show up during the event. Those people are going to park in a certain area, say, other than Main Street, the, the side streets.
Mm-hmm.
So what has, what's your thought? Where, where are you? Four hundred riders showing up?
That'll be two hundred and fifty cars. So if the weather was good, I'd link Laurel, Laurel Carlton would be great to use Laurel Carlton to have that as main directional. Now, we do something unique also is we provide a Google venue map that we create for all the people that are accepting our food vouchers. And then on that map, we have like Main Street, any area that the city feels like do not park. I'm very much the uh, pipe piper. My rule and my word, if they are going to be disqualified, they'll be disqualified if they park in the wrong spot. Now, a lot of them will bring family members, so hopefully they'll be going to the bakery and other places. But I'm going to lean on your, you folks to say that, oh, these, most city streets like Walport will take over and park everywhere except for in front of a business. Like we won't park in their grocery store, things to that nature. So um, those things are always a concern. Uh, and that's why I capped the event at three hundred people. And being so close to uh, Portland, I think we'll get that amount. But Laurel Carlton would be my best suggestion. Um, and to follow up on that, the one thing I don't have right now, and if somebody has an idea on it, is we get so many folks that come in now with Sprinter vans. They just want to find a place just to go sleep in their van. Now, like in Cottage Grove, city council has allowed us to give them a parking pass where we'll issue the pass when they come to Packet Pickup. They'll put the pass in the window so police know that they're official. They're not just randos sleeping somewhere. So we'll be in Bohemia Park. So if there was a place where that accommodation could possibly be, maybe not this year, but you may know a property owner, you may know somebody that's close that has a vacant lot. Um, those things are always nice for the people that have the van life. They love, they love to sleep in their vans.
Are there any other questions? No. Okay.
And I'm an open conduit, so anyone you council members has in your official capacity, of course. I love it. The insurance talk, I've been on liability and been involved in a lot of things where, um, but no, feel free. Please reach out, contact me, anything with a concern or question because I want to make this event positive impact on the community and after the event, we'll do a full review. So if you see something that could be improved, please um, please let me know because we were in seven years in Oak Ridge with this event, but the fires, the smoke, three weeks less, um, having rain, three weeks less of rain in Oregon is not fun for anybody. And it's really become apparent that people have to be tougher and bear down a little bit in the spring and have a good time with their bikes. So.
Can, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No.
Okay, no, um, so thanks so much for bringing this. Love seeing bikes in town. Um, one question I have, um, if they end up using Lower Park as a parking venue, um, will you, well, no, they'll have bikes for, they won't need a shuttle van, right? Yeah, they'll have their bikes, of course.
Yes.
So great.
And they'll be gravel bikes.
I love it so much. Yeah, thank you.
So is this event like a, a national points race or is it just a tour?
It's a, it's a timed event, so it's a gravel fondo. So grand fondos are road events, gravel fondos are on off-road. So people are timed. Uh, probably thirty percent of them care about the timing, thirty to forty percent of them. Uh, we have a forty-seven or a sixty-seven mile loop. And we'll have certified flaggers. We'll have a base medic. We'll have a medic on course that can roam you around. So it's, it's for the enthusiast cyclist. That's the best way to say it. It's not the person that probably hasn't biked in ten years. But it's for the person that just loves their bike and they want to go and take it somewhere really nice. And the really important thing, like I work with Pendleton now and we had a big event this last, we have a big event with probably five hundred cyclists coming, is giving somebody a good first impression or a reason to stop in Carlton once, they may come back a second time. And I think that is what I've found to be a real big joy. People may come to my event in Walport, but they're in Portland or Seattle. They never would have been to Walport or Yahats.
Yeah.
And now maybe another time they'll come by and stop and know they have, you guys have a great bakery. You have blind pig, I've ate at probably six-year restaurants. So uh, it's a really cool community.
Thank you.
Quick question, Mike. Um, so I'm assuming, so this is the city permit. Um, I'm assuming you guys have county permits and stuff for
Yeah, county with Yamhill.
And that's all approved and?
It's not approved, yeah. No, they're still in review process, but yeah, uh, it's a, they took my five hundred dollars.
They took it.
It's all I know. It's cash. The check's cash. So I think that something's going on.
Gotcha. And then uh, second, just a clarification. So it looks like Packet um, Pickup is in the evening on Saturday. So you expect people to
Yeah.
Maybe be here overnight or do, most people, can they pick it up on Sunday morning? I, I just wonder like
Sunday morning, yeah, both days. Yeah, we have Packet Pickup tentatively slated for here. Uh, so they'll get a really nice exposure here. Uh, pick up their custom stuff and custom plate. And then on Sunday morning also, they'll be able to pick it up over in the park at the basketball court. That's where we have the plan for Packet Pickup. Uh, the one thing that we do have in the permit proposal, uh, I have a twenty-four foot event trailer. So trailering that in like early Saturday morning, just to get it kind of situated over there and possibly on Friday, just kind of coordinating that offer, making sure it seems like it's pretty quiet, but I'll come in really early before I have to go do final course pad.
What are the vendors? I read something about vendors during award ceremony.
Vendor could be somebody that's selling merchandise or they could be like a, a, a bicycle, like we'll have hopefully Tommy's Bike Shop, uh, at McMinnville or doing wrenching. So anybody that is not part of my, I mean, they'll be under my purview because I'll offer permit, but they could be an outside entity that would require me to ask them for their own liability insurance. So I keep their, their vendor and their type of activity separate. So not as far as, we're not going to have any food trucks or food vendors. So this is one of the rare events where the proximity of people coming back to town and going downtown to eat is the best I have in any of my events. So. But vendor would be anybody that's an outside person that needs to come or wants to, uh, like Cycle Yamhill, we'll be there with a booth. So I know they have club insurance. They would be a vendor, I guess technically.
Are there any other questions?
Uh, make a motion that the city council approve the requests, uh, the use of Lad Park in the partial temporary Grant Street closure, pending approval of surrounding property owners and on, on Sunday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five for the Sasquatch Duro Bike Event.
Second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded? We do voice vote or do we? Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
We'll be back much more, much more at times. Thank you, guys. Have a great.
Looking forward to it. Okay, item C is council goal two priorities.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, at the goal-setting session, um, we have goal two, which is related to housing and livability. And there are some very large items under action two point one and two point two, including advancing housing and development strategies, vacation rental properties, and community livability, green space, pollinators, and historic preservation of properties. So I wanted to take some time and talk about the planner and his priorities and work with you to get a prioritization of some of these items in two point one and two point two, at least maybe the top three to start with. And the reason is because the planner's top And the reason is because the planner's top priority is is to address any land use applications. That either come in or that are proceeding that have questions as they are continuing through development. Uh, the second priority for the planner is for the T S P update. That is a grant that his time is in place. He's working with the consultants. Um, bringing his knowledge as well as our city engineer and other staff to that process. And so those are his top two priorities. So we would be putting any of the items in two point one or two point two. And as we have the ability to fit in with in those, if we have any gaps between those two top priorities. So if you can prioritize for us, that will help us set budget for the upcoming year for planning. Um, part of what I included in your packet was. A a draft of what he is bringing to the Planning Commission next week regarding accessory structures. Which was part of your development code update. And he's working with the Planning Commission to get recommendations to council. For updating that section of the code. I included that draft material so that you can see just how much time and effort he puts in behind the scenes. To give very detailed information to the Planning Commission. So that they can focus their energies towards reviewing the materials and making an informed recommendation back to council. So it's, he's not just spending thirty minutes before the Planning Commission meeting and slapping something down on the table. He puts quite a lot of thought and effort into the materials. Um, I also included a copy of the fee structure from the Council of Government. So that you have that. That is our intergovernmental agreement for planning services in addition to the staff we have on site. Um, so that you can see what that structure looks like. It does change every July one, like many of our budgets do. Um, so that you can see what those costs are. I also included uh last year's approved budget. And the part that is relevant for the planner's fee is called professional services, which includes legal review as well as planning services. Um, just to give you an idea, uh, last year. If we just did the professional services alone, it works out to be about two, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty seven hours. And that's just planning services. So it doesn't count any of Tyler's time. So it's a little unrealistic, but I was just trying to give you some context. That works out to be about nineteen hours a month. And that's trying to fit in, you know, land use applications, answering uh project questions, uh, the T S P. And then fitting these other items in as his time allows within our budget. Um, in previous years when we were doing comp plan and development code, it was a bit higher. So just taking the forty thousand dollar figure. Um, that worked out again. It's not realistic because it doesn't include any legal services. But just to give some context, that works out to be about three hundred and sixty hours for the year or about thirty hours a month. Which again, number one is the land use, two is the T S P, and then fitting these other items in. So that is why I'm, I wanna work with you on seeing if we can set some priorities that if we do see a gap and we have. Um, the budget for it, that we can move the top priority in there. And that staff is operating under your top priorities within these goals. Um, just for discussion purposes, from what I've heard. Uh, I have a a suggestion of consideration that obviously number one be continuing on with the work that he's drafted. The accessory dwelling units and completing that portion of the process. So we can get that clarity for the code and for staff. Um, and then number two would be working on our historic properties. Uh, that one has been waiting a while and that has been a council goal in action for a while. And then number three of what I've heard recently, um, maybe fire code update and or wetland buffer. Um, I, the reason I put these top items there is they're either in progress or they've been waiting. Um, or I've heard ver- a lot of interest in. I did some of our wetlands, housing, vacation rental, green spaces. Those were all recently had large discussions through the development code. And that is why I didn't raise them. For our initial discussion purposes add to the top of the list because they've all recently had a lot of attention. So just to get us started in the conversation to see if we can narrow down some top priorities for staff.
Does anybody wanna dive right in here?
Uh, I'll dive in. Um, I think it makes sense to, you know, the focus is on um, the accessory dwelling. You know, obviously they're putting a lot of time and effort into that. So I wouldn't wanna halt that. It seems like it's pretty close to going to the Planning Commission. So that makes sense to continue on to that. Um. And then um, what did you list as the first priority? I'm sorry, Shannon.
Historic properties because that one's been on our list for quite some time and it hasn't received the attention like the other sections.
Yeah, I think that's important. Um, but I I would also, you know, with recent activity and things that are happening. I I do think that looking into the wetland buffers and wat- wetland preservation is relatively important, especially. Due to the time, the timing of certain things. Um, I I do think the historical properties is important as well, but I wouldn't necessarily have them ranked in that order, in my opinion.
I I agree um with Kevin's assessment. And I would like to see some really strong wetland, riverway. Um, waterway protections from all development. So some buffer zones. And um, I think that may be one of the easier things. Because I think there's other cities that have model codes that do that. And we can perhaps, I, not being a city planner, I don't know. But I'm thinking they could cut and paste some of those ordinances. And I don't, I, the historical, I I think that's a nice thing, but I don't see um. An easy way to have that, have anything meaningful implemented, given that all the properties pro- is privately owned.
Any other comments?
Yes. I also agree with uh Kevin's comments and and would like to emphasize uh that for me. A very top priority is to issue number three under action two point one, promoting green space initiatives, including wetland preservation trees. And support for pollinators. That's a high priority for me and I think it's support to the city.
That it? Do you agree? Do we have consensus?
Yes, ma'am.
So I heard continue with accessory dwellings as number one. If we have to choose a number two, I heard mixed between wetland preservation or wetland buffer and historic properties. Do we have for me wetland?
Uh, green space initiatives, wetland preservation is definitely number two for me.
Yeah, that sounds to be more the priority.
Um, I think there's a difference between green space and wet and but wetland buffers. Um, green space would be like as a developer develops, they would include open space in their development. Which is different than the buffer from our wetlands. Um, buffers for the wetlands will protect those waterways from parking lots going right up to the wetland delineation. Or um, any other development that encourages right to the boundary of the wetlands or the waterway. So I would actually put in priority. Um, the wetland buffer and then green space. Because I think there was, I remember when we did our code update, there was considerable discussion around green space. And I think we kinda went round the bend and back with green space. Um, the conclusion of how it went into code wasn't what I would have supported, but that was um, that was the kind of the consensus decision. But the wetland buffers is a new thing that could really protect our con- our um, waterways. Especially since we're a T M D L total, no, T D M L. Yeah, so that would be, that would fit hand and glove into those requirements.
Well, I'm okay with the green space area, but I think the historical should be. You know, I I push for the parks and that. Or not the green space, excuse me. I'm okay with the wetlands to get that protected and do stuff and then go to the historical. And then the parks can follow since we've already got. Three, kinda four little parks, well, three good parks and one little park in town. Um, that's where I'm at. The historical stuff has been waiting and waiting and it needs to be addressed.
So I'm currently hearing accessory dwellings, wetland buffer, historic, green space.
Yeah, I think so. And I I think, yeah, just to double down, I think. Um, the priorities are there and as as Counselor Terrell mentioned, like if we could knock something off quicker, that's that frees up more time. And and I agree that the wetland buffer could probably be a quicker topic for them to address. Um, I I do think that the historical um district and things, properties, that's gonna be a huge time suck. That's gonna, gonna take a lot of time. So I would hate to get stalled on something for the next year. You know, at the Planning Commission level, even though I think it, it's it's good and and right. I do, I do share concerns about how it's gonna be implemented and the feasibility of that. And I just see that as taking up a lot of the city planner. And Planning Commission's time. So um, I think, yeah, like you said, the accessory dwelling, in my opinion, it's already happening. Wetland buffer preservation. And then however, we wanna rank the third one is.
Yes, I'm getting a little stuck on what um, Counselor Terrell said about uh the green space initiatives or. Within the framework of developments. I guess I am not thinking of it that way. I think promoting green space initiatives can be any, definitely outside of uh, the context of. Development within the city. Anybody else's thoughts on that?
Um, I I think so. Are you thinking of um, green space as a park? Or as a, because typically I think, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I think green space is um, what's considered as when a developer comes in and develops uh this subdivision. They include green space in that subdivision and they allocate a certain number of acres or a certain number of. Space within each subdivision as um, green space. Um, if, is there a different, I, tell me more. I'm I'm not.
Well, I just haven't thought of it in that context. I mean, a green space initiative to me could be, you know, thinking of any area of Carlton. That we would consider for green space with or without the the idea of a development.
So maybe an overlay zone of.
Right.
An overlay zone where you might wanna preserve some green space as an overlay zone so that it can't be developed.
I'm not sure about that. If you preserve, Tyler, I have a question. If you preserve something as a green space initiative, I mean, is that precluded from development?
That would depend on the specific uh, green space initiative that we are talking about. It could limit development. I I think you both are talking about very similar things. Just slightly different.
Yeah, I just wasn't framing it just within the context of development. I think that's all really different.
I think the nice thing about these goals and and action items is we can always revisit it. So I I feel like we have. A good consensus on, you know, one and two. And maybe when we get to wrapping up two or post it to, then we start talking about three and four.
I'm hearing a pretty good consensus about the first three, maybe four items um, that will give uh staff direction. And you're right, we can always revisit them. But the last thing I ever wanna do is to think that something is your priority. And put it in front of the Planning Commission and bring you a recommendation and go, why the heck were you working on that? That wasn't what was important to us out of this list. So thank you very much for the work and I've got my marching orders.
And we can't promise that we still won't say that.
No, it's been removed. It's, no, it's on recording. It's been removed.
Too late. Alrighty, so that takes care of item C, goal priorities. Um, item D, council goal number one, street and sidewalk info.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is um, very similar coming out of your goal setting session. Uh, streets and sidewalks um are have been a high priority. And as we're going into setting the budget, um, I wanted to take these two items and get some clarification and greater direction from you. I'll start with the streets. Uh, in twenty seventeen, the city completed a pavement condition report that is in your packet uh for your review and refresher. And um, the city did receive a presentation about the results in September, fall of twenty seventeen. The report includes funding scenarios and potential funding mechanisms. And following the goal setting session and getting the feedback about um. Increased interest in moving streets higher up the list as we are making significant improvements to water and wastewater infrastructure. I did get a quote from, to update this report from twenty seventeen to have it analyzed for this time period. It doesn't need to be updated necessarily. Uh, we can work from the twenty seventeen report. But I also recognize that some people might want updated information about the condition of streets and see how they've changed over the last few years. And so I did get that quote for your consideration. That quote is forty nine hundred dollars or fifty nine hundred dollars if you add in additional. Uh, looks like city council meeting time. Um, and so my question to council is, is getting an update to the street condition report. Something you want us to budget for in this next fiscal year?
Shannon, I have several questions around this. Um, so at that two s- two thousand and seventeen. Report, it had some recommended funding levels or or it just had three scenarios of funding levels. And I went back through the budgets and um, back through from, at least from twenty twenty to present. It shows that we are allocating forty thousand dollars a year from the capital improvement fund for paving. Explicitly for paving. Um, can you tell me how that money has been spent, if it's been spent for paving? And how that money has been used? And has it been used um, as recommended, the recommended street hierarchy?
So it has been utilized for paving projects as well as there's line items in there for sidewalks. And we have made um, paving opportunities. Uh, it hasn't always coincided exactly with the street index report in its recommendations. However, um, we have taken opportunities that while we're doing another project, let's say if there's a water line that needs to be repaired. Then we're also taking the opportunity to do a street repair at the same time. And so it hasn't coincided exactly. As the report or the index has, but those monies have been utilized towards paving.
So um, those, the recommendations in the report, when I read through it, it um prioritized maintaining good and fair streets. Because the, that keeps you from having the drop off, the drop off the cliff when a fair street doesn't have its sealant or its slurries on. Applied. Um, so have we been doing that with that forty thousand dollars that we've allocated for paving?
It's primarily for overlays as well as fixing roads and making match to some of our S E A grants.
So, so it's um, mostly like if there's a, if we have to dig up a road to fix a pipe, then we use that. Forty thousand dollars to repair a patch where we dug up.
Or to add to a grant funding opportunity that we received this small city allotment program.
Um, my personal opinion is, you know, we we know the the street conditions. Um, and even though I would like updated information because twenty seventeen was eight years ago. I think we haven't made significant progress since twenty seventeen. I mean, I'm not sa- saying we haven't. Um, but there's just still a lot, as we know, a lot of work to do. And even though forty nine hundred dollars doesn't get you a a few potholes, but I would rather just see the money. Allocated to the budget to try to make more paving projects happen. I I feel like if staff is saying, we can still use the information from the twenty seventeen. And still relevant, I think we're money ahead by just saving that um and making more progress on the budget. And trying to get some road paving done.
Yes. I agree, I agree with Kevin on that. This, I think on the older streets, probably those that need the most repair, you know, nothing much has changed. So I don't think it's necessarily worth uh, putting that forty nine hundred dollars in. We could use it to actually fix the streets.
Well, a good example of that is we have this sanitary project for uh Grant Street that will be coming up in the next summer. So if we have an opportunity to do some paving on Grant Street or sidewalk development. We'll wanna do it at the same time to inconvenience the residents as much as possible on one swell swoop.
We appreciate that.
So, so Shannon, where will that money come from then? So which fund will we be drawing from to, um? I, I mean, keeping in mind that we have six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars, four hundred and forty fours. Put for this, that is drawn from Water Sewer and General Fund. Um, and we do transfers across funds to into the capital improvement fund. So if we're, if we're allocating specific funds for, um. For a paving. Where, where will we get that money?
That comes from your street fund, and those transfers go into your capital fund for street projects, and those are outlined in every capital improvement program in the budget.
So I, um, when I look at the budgets, honestly, I wonder how we can afford, um. To fix what we have if we don't get grants, um. I, I think it would be really important to really prioritize where we're going to spend. This money, if we're allocating a significant amount more, I think it's gonna be important to know. Where those funds are coming from exactly, which funds we're drawing them from, where we're transferring them across. And make it really clear in the budget so we can, um, understand. How this bigger budget picture fits together, given that we have. I, I, it's a significant debt, eight point eight. So eight point eight million dollars is, really cripples us for being able to borrow more money, or I think within three million dollars of our debt limit. So, um. I, I have concerns about getting this money.
The city staff is always looking for opportunities for grants to leverage our funds, um, as well as minimizing impact to our citizens, but the question before Council today. Is whether or not you want us to allocate in the budget forty nine hundred dollars or fifty nine hundred dollars for a new street assessment.
So I would agree with Kevin that, um, we don't want a new street assessment. I think we can work on what we have.
Do we need a motion for this?
I just need consensus.
Agreed. Carol.
Hey. I, I thought I heard Kevin say that we would allocate forty nine hundred in the budget for the street improvement. Would.
No, I was saying we wouldn't. We would just use the twenty seventeen information. Cause I think, I think a lot of, if we did the forty nine hundred dollars and got an updated thing, it would be very similar to the twenty seventeen report, in my opinion. So you're. So I'm, I'm saying we do not spend that money.
Okay, I heard you say spend the money.
No, I'd rather spend the money on paving and streets, yeah, yeah.
Okay, spend it on the actual paving.
Yeah.
Okay, is that what Shannon is talking about?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I go for.
Okay, so we will not allocate forty nine hundred dollars for a new assessment.
Okay.
We got it. Thank you. Alrighty, item E.
No, actually, with.
What, oh.
Sidewalks. So the, the city has attempted several strategies to assist homers in the cost for repair and replace the sidewalks because our code, like. Numerous codes throughout the state of Oregon as well as this country, it is the property owner's responsibility to keep. And maintain their sidewalk and good repair and condition. The city council has expressed a desire to minimize the impact to the citizens, and we've worked diligently at least over the three and a half years to try to get something off the ground that also brought in students to treat them a trade. Teach them a trade, sorry. Um, we have not been able to get that off the ground to date. So, given that this was again raised at the goal setting. I have pulled together six different sidewalk programs throughout the state of Oregon. Through this, I hope through your review that you could tell me. Two or three programs that you would like more information on for me to get more details. There's an Oregon City Program that provides grant assistance to homeowners. There's a Washington County Program that is quite extensive that also does, is a grant program. Grants Pass has something that, uh, terminology that I don't necessarily recommend, hazardous sidewalks is their program. Um, and they have a payment plan option as well as a financing option. Uh, the city of Woodburn has a fifty fifty program where as, as funds, um. Are, remain that people can apply to them up to a certain limit. Uh, the city of Sherwood has a specified fee program. And all of those five programs would require quite a bit of administrative, uh, review assistance, tracking. And we would have to track criteria, we would have to take applications in. If we were to provide financing, there's somebody who needs to track that billing, the amount. Um, we would have to bill every month, make sure we were collecting every month. Um, so there's a lot that goes into that accounts payable, accounts receivable process, review, criteria acceptance. Um, through those programs. The city of Corvallis, um. It's not gonna be a popular strategy, it has the least amount of staff. Um, responsibility, um, or additional duties that would be added to staff, which might require us to hire somebody else if we have. Need to have additional duties for staff. Um, the city of Corvallis. It does not limit the liability to the property owner, but they take in a set fee. Per utility household. And with that fee, they create a bundle, a pot of money. And then they have broken their sidewalks up into districts throughout the city. And every fiscal year, they have city staff go review the next district. And then they evaluate which sidewalks they have the capability of, and they've ranked them about which ones have the highest priority for repair and replacement. And, um, what funding they have for that fiscal year that they can spend out of that money. For a line item that's very specific to repairing, um, sidewalks within that program. So all I'm looking for today is, as you have read your materials, is which programs, hopefully narrowed down to two or three please. That you would like more information on that I can bring back to Council for your further consideration and review.
Yes.
Um, so it's unclear to me in those five programs other than the city of Corvallis, um, I can only assume where they're getting the money from. So I'm assuming since they're larger cities, larger counties, they have a bigger budget than we do. Um, or maybe it's just not clear in there that they charge a fee also. Um, so that part was a little bit unclear, cause I don't see how, how we get away with, um. Creating something with no money. Um, we, we can't give a fifty fifty match if we don't have the money in our street fund for a fifty fifty match. Um, so I agree, it's not popular. I mean, I think their rate was two dollars per utility hookup. I'm assuming that's a monthly. Charge. Um, I would like to investigate that and see what that looks like, because I just don't see any other mechanism. Um. Moving forward, other than drastically changing the budget to try to get the street fund where it needs to be, um. So that was my first concern. I, I, I'll have more questions about that if that's the direction we go, um. I, I wouldn't, I would like to see a fifty fifty or some, some sort of incentive for property owners as it is, as it is our. As property owner, our responsibility, um, for the condition of the sidewalk. But I would like to see the city work towards some kind of grant or, or matching fund or something like that, but I just don't see how. Um, I don't know if we would get anywhere if we, if we said, hey, go talk to Sherwood or go talk to Washington County. Cause I think we'd be back to, that sounds great, but we don't have fifty thousand dollars in sidewalk repair budgeted every year, so.
And that is certainly possible. It would be something that if just at first blush, you saw a program that looked interesting to you, is that I would ask for those specifics. Do they charge a fee? How do they fund their, their programs? How much staff does it? Does it take to review and to account for these things? Um, so from what I've heard right now is the city of Corvallis and perhaps the city of Woodburn with its fifty fifty incentive.
Any comments down this way? Questions, concerns?
Say on the bright day, what? And what's in the pot of money for sidewalks?
This last year budgetarily was about a hundred thousand dollars, and just to give you context. We got a quote for the two sidewalks we were able to do on Main Street this year. They were, concrete was at about a sixty dollars a foot, at a hundred thousand dollars at about sixteen hundred feet. Each one of those homes was over a hundred feet of sidewalk, so you're looking at about sixteen homes just with that hundred thousand, so that's not much. Um, in the way of coverage, so we.
Sixty dollars a foot?
Yeah, and.
Is what? Price what then?
That was January of twenty twenty-four. I can guarantee it's gone up since then.
Probably seventy-five or more now. Easy, yeah.
Yep.
So you say we have a hundred, or had a hundred thousand dollars. And then, how is it clarified for me again? The money gets into that particular account, coming out of the general fund?
It comes from the street fund, and that information is actually in your packet as well. You can see that it comes from gas tax revenue as well as some state shared revenue sharing. Um, and then small amounts from permits and fees, and then as that's built up, we're able to transfer monies into the capital fund.
Grant, I, I looked at that actually, and it, it looked like from the, um, twenty twenty-four audit, there was tw- three hundred and twenty-three thousand, a hundred and fifty-four ending balance in the street fund. From the audit. Is that correct?
We don't have that audit in front of us, so we can't answer that question.
Yeah, and I, and I, I mentioned fifty percent. I, I mean, um, I definitely would like to see a cap on that. I'm also not a, opposed to. A set dollar amount, so I know I'm kinda jumping around a little bit, but, um. I also don't think, you know, Oregon City was fifteen hundred dollars first come, first served, but only by tree roots. Which clearly isn't our problem, maybe in some areas of town, but. We have no tree roots and no sidewalks or broken sidewalks, so I don't, I don't like that methodology, but I wouldn't be opposed to a set dollar amount. Um, versus a fifty fifty match either. But I, I think something needs to happen, and I do appreciate that you're, you're looking into it and asking for guidance or assistance, because, you know, I've been. On Council for four years, and I know how much work we've been trying to put into find contractors and student programs and things like that. It's been pretty frustrating, cause I was, I was hopeful, hopeful with fingers crossed that we would have. East Maine and West Maine kinda taken care of, but, yeah, I, I think getting direction from us is good, and I think. Kinda coming up with something to talk about again, to kinda get some. Get some legs underneath this would be great.
Can, can I add one more thing? Um, so I guess, um, as a resident who walks lots of places, um. And who is, would be an advocate for our schools, I would think, um, a Safe Routes to School grant would probably at least get our sidewalks. We, we, that could be at least one grant that I would like us to work on.
We have done that three times unsuccessfully, three times. A lot of the time is because, um. It's income consideration.
Because what, I'm sorry?
Income consideration.
It also isn't in our current TSP, and, and needs to be in our TSP to, our update will add it, where.
Yeah.
Points it out, and that is one of the requirements of the Safe School to, grant, is that our TSP has to point it out, and our current one does not, so we're kind of uphill battle.
Okay, so, uh, so that would be one thing, and then my other, my only other comment is, I mean, in the. In the context of rising utility rates that people are, I mean, I hear all the time people are upset about their utility rates. Um, and I, I, I don't know how we could impose even a monthly fee without some town hall or some. Um, outreach to the community to find out if they were supportive of that, because I don't think we should do. Any more initiatives without actually going to the people and getting a lot of it somehow.
And that certainly could be part of the discussion as we move forward in this process, but right now, just to get us towards this process was, is there any programs you want further information on? So far, I've heard city of Corvallis and the city of Woodburn, are there any others you want? And believe me, two is plenty for my research, if you like.
I, I agree with the sensitivity on the utility charge increase or maintenance fee increase, things like that, or this is not a good climate for that. I wanna go back to the, uh, you said we had about a hundred K in the twenty-four street fund. And we were able to do sixteen homes approximately. Um, if we had done a fifty fifty match, if our residents could meet us. For that, could we take our hundred K and make it basically two hundred K and do more like thirty homes? Would that be a good thing in our city? I mean, uh, it would be, I think it would be a good accomplishment.
Um, and as we go through this discussion, we can certainly pull that analysis just on. Face value, your hundred thousand wouldn't be exactly two hundred thousand, because some of the sidewalks, the ADA ramps are about four thousand dollars apiece themselves. Um, so if you've got corners or if you've got a dual corner, you've got, um, quite a bit of cost there. Um, furthermore is. When you're doing grant programs, I'm gonna go back to staffing. And now you've got more criteria analysis, you've got applications to review, you've got accounts payable to do, accounts receivable. So unfortunately, some of that staffing would cut into that amount, and like I said, I would give a much greater analysis when we get to that point in this discussion. But just at face value, it wouldn't be an, an initial doubling.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I think, yeah, Corvallis, Woodburn would be good ones to reach out to, um, and I, I agree with the town hall, the utility. Um, fees is something important to bring to the community. Um, so that they can understand, you know what I mean, cause at, at face value, it could just look like, hey, we're, we're attaching a new two dollar fee monthly to your thing for sidewalks, but. If the community can get in the same room, um, and understand, well, right now, technically, we don't have to give you anything, we don't. You, you're responsible for it, so the other option is knocking on doors, saying, fix your sidewalk. I mean, we don't do that, and I'm not advocating for that, but I don't think everybody in the community, um. Understands that. Um, so being transparent about it, talking it through what we're looking into, what it currently, whose responsibility it is, I think it would be. Um, a softer ask and a better way to, um, communicate what we're doing.
And part of the timeline that your staff has thought out about bringing this to you now, is that if you've narrowed it to these two. Next month, I can bring in more information about these two, then we can see what other generated questions you have, so now. March, you're talking about two, April, maybe we're talking about one or a different strategy. Concurrently, we're also having our utility rates analyzed to see if the grants that we've been able to bring in and the projects we've completed. Have gotten us to a point where we can stabilize our rates, which gives you another component of information about the spring timeframe. About, uh, to have that discussion at a town hall or any other public meetings in which you have. But these things are running at the same time, and so that you can have this information to make informed decisions and have informed conversations with the citizens.
And so I had just one more question, because, um, I did see in the CIF fund. Or the planning, it was planned to budget thirty thousand a year for sidewalks, and that was also back from two twenty, two thousand twenty. Um, was as far back as I could find that, um. It, what, what did we do with that thirty thousand dollars for sidewalks? What were you using that for?
We used them for sidewalks.
So like city-owned property sidewalks or, or helping out peak homeowners? So I.
We would help out homeowners, we would be completing a project, and there would be a small piece that was right next to it, that it would make sense to use those funds to complete it. Which we did, um, we would try to do missing sidewalks. We, we worked with what our projects were happening, and we worked to develop it, make it make sense for that fiscal year.
Sure, I appreciate that. I just, I just was trying to envision, cause we don't have this, the revenue sharing currently, so I was envisioning what we were doing with that. Thank you.
Shannon, I was wondering if you could refresh my memory on the, uh, I believe we had, uh, it was like a year and a half. Two years ago, we had grant money for a sidewalk project on East Main Street, and we're having difficulty getting a contractor and students to be involved in the program. What, what was the final result of that?
So we were unable to secure a contractor that was willing to work with the students. Um so we lost the opportunity to have the students, and um the grant money wasn't, it wasn't a grant. It was a public-private partnership in which we had donations from a foundation, and because. The the donations would go directly to the five oh one C three and not to the city. Those donations never went anywhere, so it's not as if the city let a grant expire and it'll let that opportunity go.
Weren't those sidewalks fifty fifty with homeowner?
The two that we completed on Main Street, the agreement that we came up with council. Is that the homeowners would pay for the sidewalk portion and the city would pay for the ADA ramps. Those were both corner properties, and they were um big trip hazards. If you remember, one of the sidewalks had. Large pieces of concrete right on Main Street coming out.
There is a project on Polk Street too, yeah? That, yeah, that goes to the school.
I'm sorry, counselor, without having the information ahead of time, it's I'm, I've I've slept a couple of nights, not many this past year, but a couple. I'm trying to remember the specific one on Polk. Sorry.
Think it was the length of Polk that led to the school.
That one, that one is actually, it was a grant, wasn't it? That was pre Shannon, so that was way back when.
Okay, folks. Any other questions, discussion?
Yeah, I'm in support of Corvallis and Woodburn researching those two.
Got what you need? Alrighty. So. We are down to. Did I skip one again, or am I?
We're to the surplus sale item E. Ms Emerson, would you take the lead on this, please?
I sure can. Um so with the city staff moving into the civic center. And then the PD moving up and the public works moving over and out and around. Uh we have some office equipment and furniture and some other items um that are left over. We staff, we used as much as we could in different spots, so you might not see it here, but. Public Works might have it down in their office, or the PD might have it on their side. So we recycled and reutilized as much as we could. Um but we do have some leftover items that um we are not able to use, and so we want to have a surplus sale. We're do it March twenty-second. Prior to our cleanup day, when the dump day that we have on at the park. Um and so that way, residents can come down to Public Works, and we will have items for sale that are very, very. It'll, it's like a garage sale, essentially, you know, at very low cost, very friendly, very quick in in and out. Um but there are some items that are larger. We have some desks and some things like that, but um I just want to make sure that you guys are all in the loop. And that you also, you know, feel free to help load cars. Just kidding.
And just to be clear, some of these items are very well-used, but if you're handy. Um and can do some repairs.
Elbow grease.
Or you don't need a garage workbench or something, um they might come in handy.
Uh quick question. So I'm familiar with surplus sales. Um how do you? I I just have a hard time envisioning, when I think of garage sales, I think of bartering and saying, uh will you take this, but. Since it's a surplus sale, how do, I mean, normally they go out to bid or they go on a public website. Um is it gonna be a set price and you either pay the price?
It is.
Or how does that?
Right, so everything is, I've started setting prices, and it it is, there is negotiation if you, if they so choose. Um but I will let you know that we we really need the space back, so it's very cheap, like. I'm using the fifty cent sticker a lot. Um so I don't really know that there will be a whole lot of people wanting to negotiate. They'll just want to get their stuff if they really want it. Um because it's fifty cents.
But you do have to, you have to public notice it.
Oh, a hundred percent. There'll be public noticing. Um we also, e- everything is first come, first served to residents, first of all. Public one oh one is our goal. Um whatever is left, staff will also do, if there's anything that staff wants. That we will do an auction or type thing, bidding type things like that for them. Um and then whatever will is left over, and we can't re-recycle or donate, it will go into the dumpsters. For cleanup day, yeah.
Some of the more significant items, we have photos that will be put out there for people to preview.
That's a good idea. I could do that.
There you go.
Yeah, we can have a page on the links, the good-looking stuff. There'll be two photos.
Photoshop, Amy, Photoshop.
Yes, yes, but it will be well-advertised, and we will, you know, we're just wanting to make sure that we get everybody on the same page, but we do have. A form, there's a checkout will take a little bit longer. Folks will have to give their name. We itemize the uh. The items that they bought on their receipt, their carbon copy. We need it for our auditing purposes, so that we have a record of what we have sold or donated. Um and then you guys also will have, the purchaser will have that as their receipt. Um so there, there's a little bit of checkout time, um but. We have to have it. Thank you. Is that it?
That is it.
All right, item F, city manager.
Thank you. Um this last week has been an adventure. Um I want to start with a a bit of an update. Uh I did attend uh the League of Oregon Cities City Day at the Capitol last Tuesday. Um I did include, we we had a general session in the morning that we heard from the governor. Uh the Senate Republican Leader, Speaker of the House, Senate President, and House Republican Leader, some youth delegates. Uh the LOC talked about the four priorities that they were pushing that day. Um as you remember, they're pushing strongly for an infrastructure and housing development package. Uh comprehensive transportation package. Clarifying time, place, and manner for public camping that uh council discussed last year. But getting more clarity about the regulations we can put around that that are reasonable. And then transient lodging lodging tax and for cities being able to be more flexible. About utilizing it for things that are also impacted um by visitors such as roads, uh bicycles. Um water and sewer infrastructure. So they want, they were pushing that. One of the key takeaways is that the League of Oregon Cities for their transportation package. Uh they did a survey throughout the state, and they found that. Uh transportation funding historically has primarily been allocated to new projects and new initiatives. Rather than to maintenance throughout the state. Ninety percent of the budget has historically gone towards new projects. And that currently forty percent of all cities. So this is all cities ser- uh surveyed throughout the state, forty percent of their roads are in poor to very poor condition. They said cities alone require six point three three million dollars for maintenance, and that does not include county roads. And not state roads. And so they said it was essential for any transportation package for revenue to be stable and sustainable. Um and we've also seen that recently. You've probably seen articles from the city of Newburgh or Multnomah County. Echoing that same funding challenge that we're all facing. So I wish I could say that Carlton um was unique in our streets. But we are not. Um we're in good company. Um in the afternoon was actually the most productive. I met with Representative Lucetta Elmer, who represents us. I focused on the priorities that came out, uh that we've been focusing on, and that remained through council goal-setting. Of working with ODOT to free that one point five million in congressionally-directed spending on West Main Street, so we can get that paved. Uh wastewater collection pipes, uh the southeast water distribution line around the school, and long-term water security. I have a tentative meeting with her staff this Friday. It's in the southeast area to look at infrastructure projects there. I also met with Senator Starr, uh focused on the same priorities as I just mentioned. Um Senator Starr is a strong advocate for West Main Street, and. Um he's gonna take a very innovative approach and and uh work on contacting um. Any new federal representative that is appointed to the Transportation Department at the federal level directly. To see if we can move some things forward. Um he's also intrigued by an approach uh for another city for additional long-term water security. In addition to McMenville Water and Light, just as uh yeah, as I've always said, there's no such thing as too much redundancy when it comes to long-term water security. So at the senator's request, I will be developing a one-pager for him for West Main for his utilization. Um the other large amount of time that was spent this last week, including while I was down there at the Capitol. Was working with uh federal staff and our federal funding partners, including the EPA and USDA. To evaluate the impact of the presidential executive order that froze all financial fund, federal financial funding. And what impact that had on our congressionally-directed spending. Um as you've been aware of all the ups and downs of the last week of pause, not pause, pause. Um currently, at this moment in time, at eight eighteen uh today, on Tuesday. Um it is not paused pending further motions and orders. And just as a reminder, what this impacts or could impact is the two point two million in federally-directed spending. For the wastewater improvements on Grant Street and West Main. Half a million in USDA wastewater fundings for East Main Street. And what is still pending in this federal budget that still has not, was supposed to be approved by last October one, that still has not been approved. Congresswoman Salinas has earmarked one million dollars again from the USDA for wastewater improvements on East Main. Um currently, um although ARPA has a federal nexus. We have not heard that the executive order is impacting the five point eight million dollars and for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade grant. That is through the state, but also has a federal nexus. So you're looking at quite a bit of money for our infrastructure. That I'm working very hard and close with our federal representatives to make sure that we're still moving forward. In the meantime, life goes on, and the offices of Senators Wyden and Merkley said. Oh, by the way, we're opening up a congressionally-directed spending request for this next fiscal year. So ready, set, go. We will be doing more infrastructure projects and working towards, um I'll be working with CFM advocates. On that infrastructure, um particularly on that southeast uh water project that we have been unsuccessful to date on. But I'm not gonna give up on our wastewater improvements. We have almost twenty million dollars in clay lights. That need replacing from the nineteen twenties, so we will keep working on that. Um Morgan, could you please bring up our website? I wanted to bring up a website update. Uh again, as part of our goal-setting process, we reviewed the navigation of the city's website. And I'm hoping each month to have a a newly enhanced area to take you through. So here, we're gonna go to the finance area and to urban renewal. Thank you. And then you have the information about the Urban Renewal in, agency. Can you scroll down, Morgan? Thank you. And in there, can you click on the agency goals on the left-hand side? So it talks about the goals that were originally envisioned through the public improvement process, goes through the objectives. And has supporting documents. Thank you. Would you go up and show the budget audit and annual reports, please? Thank you. If you could scroll down. And it has supporting documents there as well. So I just wanted to show you where you could find that information for everybody to review, um as well as for you to take a closer look at. Um staff is gonna try, like I said, to take one section a month and to try to update and enhance them. And then bring them to you so that you know what they are and where to find them. Um the last thing bef- um is that city council liaisons. Um many cities formally assign council liaisons to committees, and while Carlton has done this informally. Um this month, I will collaborate with the mayor and council president following our goal-setting. To create a list of existing informal assignments and identify new opportunities for the mayor to and council to consider during their meeting in March. Um these, this initiative will enhance and communication coordination between organizations and enable staff to dedicate. Time to new projects that were identified during council goal-setting. Um as important to continue like Community Corner, which will take more staff time. Examples of areas of collaboration um that uh we might be able to have council take over liaison rather than staff. Is like the Carlton Business Association, the Fund Days Committee, tourism, obviously pl- policy initiatives. Policy initiatives for planning, Council of Governments, Transportation System Plan and more. But I will be working um with them to identify a list and bring that forward for council discussion in March. And thank you, mayor and council. That concludes the. Uh interesting events of the last week.
Does anybody have any questions? Alrighty. Um number nine, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Turn. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second and thirded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks.